Make a note that Erin's gonna be late, she's been stuck in traffic. Kyle is online, so by now there's six of us here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please. Dave seconded that. There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 6-0. Board review meeting, please, Elizabeth.
Welcome to the new edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the issue of swatting and the calls that targeted numerous Missouri schools recently. Swatting calls are hoax phone calls that report serious crimes attempting to fool emergency services into sending a SWAT team to respond to a supposed emergency. In late March, there were at least nine such threats made to schools across Missouri in one day. John McDonald is the COO of the Council for School Safety Leadership and is recognized internationally as the architect of the Columbine High School post-tragedy security and emergency management plan. He says that dealing with swatting calls is complicated for many reasons.
Without a good emergency operation plan, schools really struggle in the knowledge of what do we do now? How do we manage this moment in time? And how do we effectively keep everybody safe and not shut schools down? It's a challenge, it's one more threat that we're dealing with now. As the AI, artificial intelligence, issue continues to grow, we're going to see more of these type of threats. And we have to be prepared for that, we have to have really honest, direct conversations about how we're gonna manage that. And if you do that early and you tabletop these things, talk about it, walk through your process together, make sure everybody knows what their role and responsibilities is, you'll have the opportunity to manage these without necessarily closing your schools out. There's times when you'll have a threat that reaches such significance that you have to take action to immediately protect everybody and everything. And that's part of the learning that we'll do together over the course of the next year through CES, MSBA, and partner districts all over the state, isn't right.
Regarding the importance of an emergency operations plan, don't forget that the deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free emergency operations plan development tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering a subscription to the MoEOP development tool at no cost for two years, but you must be signed up by June 1st of this year. There is no time element for completing emergency operations plans. The only time element is for participation, so please, sign up now to take advantage of this crucial school safety resource. Visit the MSBA website for more information. MSBA Summer Summit is set for June 16th and 17th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Summer Summit attendees will have the opportunity to hear a dynamic keynote speaker at the summit. Dr. Jacqueline Sanderlin, better known as Dr. Jackie, will be the featured speaker of the Summer Summit's general session breakfast at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 17th. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition.
Jackie, we were so impressed with your scholars and the work that you've done to turn the school around that the National Lacrosse League wanted to give you this check for $50,000.
Dr. Jackie's presentation will focus on the five Cs: community, collaboration, capacity, connections, and creativity. Visit the MSBA website for more information about the Summer Summit. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. And finally, keep an eye on MSBA's social media pages for good news stories about the amazing programs students and staff in public schools across Missouri. These stories are tagged with "It's Our Why." May begins with a different Belcher Scholarship winner featured each day. Keep an eye out for your region's winner. These students are great reminders of why we do what we do. And with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Anybody want to add anything to that?
I just want to ask if we have signed up for the safety resources?
We have two, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the sake, I was thinking of the June Summit audience, so for the sake... I don't think we do.
We haven't signed up for that one yet, but there's a new one with the Raptor technology, so I've got a call in to CES about that. We do both at the same time, but Raptor is one of those companies that was out there before, but I think CES is partnering with them for the next year, so I don't know. There wasn't a lot of information, so I've got a call down in there to figure out if it's free. Is it free for a year?
I think CES is here enough for some great things.
Anything else? Okay, we have two individuals that would like to speak in public comments. First one is Larry Zuhon, and he wants to talk about the high school construction. Larry, three minutes, and then Elizabeth will be the timekeeper.
Okay, just want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I guess you know why I'm here. Have you seen the videos from the construction out there at the high school last weekend? And that's good, so I'm gonna go explain that. Let me just give you a little timeframe. Friday morning, 6 o'clock, I went up to Wright Construction, told them had any issue down there, said take care of it. By 8:00, 8:30, put up a few straw bales. Gets to be by 12:30, 1:00, nothing's happening. Friday afternoon, I know where this is going. So I contacted Dr. Berger, Austin. I'm starting to get a little upset at this point. There's a few others in here that live out there, they're in the room tonight. I think they're in the same way I am. So anyway, when I called him at 12:00 or 12:30, he says he's not gonna do it, it's too wet. So that's when I got ahold of his guests. So Austin did come out there and look at it, which I'm grateful for and thankful for that. And I asked Austin, "Would you want to drive through that?" Because it was quiet, he was no. So I mean, you're driving through it, your cars are muddy, track out of your driveway, your in your garage, the whole nine yards, and keeping stuff clean. So anyway, go on. Comes Sunday evening again, it's all over again. You know, and then I sent out pictures and videos, Susan had videos, I don't know who else had stuff out there that's going on, but it wasn't good. You know, and the house down in the corner, I don't know if y'all seen that heat. It's not my issue, but I say he's getting a new yard. But, so anyway, Sunday morning, 7:00, they're out there doing it, because it is the same thing Friday, it could have prevented it from happening again then. And now I'm trying to do it then, it could have been prevented long before that because your engineering was told probably last fall there was gonna be a water issue down there. And they was told that more than once. We was also at the city planning and zoning, and city board meetings stating the same thing. Nobody's done nothing about it. We told, everybody was told that, so. And the other thing, contractors should have caught it, said this ain't right, you know. So it's T-red flags that somebody should have caught. So what's gonna happen going forward? People gonna have to live with this for the next 50 years or so? Hopefully it's being corrected. I hear some rumors of redesigning that. I don't know if that's right or not. So anyway, and when you install a three-foot pipe and a 15-inch pipe headed to a 12-inch pipe, that don't work. And they're doing it backwards. They should have started out and worked their way back in instead of out or in going out. So anyway, let me back up two weeks. Two weeks ago, we had dust. It looked like Highway 55 over there for about 10 days, wind blowing, all our cars, vehicles, houses, you couldn't even sit out on the deck. I mean, it was dusty. We was washing every day. So, and just kind of something today happened, which I thought was kind of funny, nothing here, but talking about the mud. One of the workers come up the driveway, and I just happened to be out there working the yard. He said, "Can I park here?" Says, "We're working right over there." And I didn't want to be the harshest you-know-what, but I said, "No, don't want to get this started." He said, "Well, I don't want to drive out there, probably it's too muddy." So, I mean.
Hey Larry, you can wrap it up.
Okay. Just wondering, I said, I've been in a few marketing classes in my years, and they tell me each person influence 10 people. So there's 20 voters out there, so that's 200 people can be influenced. A lot of elections have been lost or won, a lot less votes, so just... And you need to do some PR and damage control out there because I don't think any of these people sitting in this room really know what's going on. And when you start pulling those trees out, I know what's gonna happen. Somebody's getting a lot of phone calls, and they're yours, ours, and mine. So, you know, the other thing. And just kind of closing here, I want to say Dr. Berger's been great to work with. We're calling, we're communicating. We may not agree, but we're communicating. So it's, you know, and the other thing, I hope this group passes on, code grading, those guys have been great to work with. I've had a lot of interaction with them, those guys have been great to work with. But, and there's been a lot of other things, the residents out there has cleaned up, there's been times down the end of the road, didn't say nothing, went and graded it. There have been some run over of water on littler times, you know. So anyway, I guess we're just asking that everybody look into this and feel like that it might be some, who's doing the quality control? I guess that's the bottom line there, so. Is there anybody doing quality control?
Thank you for your comments. There's a Susan?
Yes.
How you doing?
Good. I just wanted to be a voice for our neighbors that live down at the end of the driveway, Jamie and Brendan. They are devastated. They've been in Mexico and they have to come back, and they've got, you know, half a foot of mud in their driveway that has to be scooped out. They just built a brand-new metal building, and they're really concerned about, you know, getting washed out and mud. They'll be back tonight, so they have no idea really, other than the videos, what's going on. But they just wanted to know, you know, hey, can we get an update? Can we make sure that everything's, you know, safe? And there's not gonna be a river coming through again. And I know I spoke to you that morning, and you guys came out like right then. I was leaving and they were already putting rock down, and it did hold, and it was, you know, a great job. So we just want to make sure it's safe, and they don't have to deal with that again.
Thank you. I'm sure during the regular agenda item, Wright will be addressing some of your questions. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate the comments. Okay, the next item on the agenda, East's presentation, Dr. Berger and Dawn.
Yeah, I think we'll start, oh, I'm sorry, East, I went through, wait, Dawn, please, thank you, Dawn.
All right, well, I'm actually going to pass this on to Ms. Amy Pritchard. But before we start, I would like our guests here to introduce themselves. They're working on speaking, so are you ready?
My name is Ava.
My name is Quinn.
That's okay?
My name is Leo.
All right, we're working on being able to do these things, and it takes a little bit, so they might jump in in a minute. But Ms. Pritchard is gonna explain to you something called Six Bricks that she's brought to East Elementary, and has been an amazing engagement structure.
I am also working on public speaking. Reminded to see that camera back there. My name is Amy Pritchard, I am a reading interventionist at East. But this summer, this past summer, the PD Committee sent me to Maryville, where I got my STEM certificate, it was an 80-hour course. And one of the many things we learned about was Six Bricks. Now, if you summarize Six Bricks in one word, it would be engagement. So we can, even, the philosophy is, we can use only six-legged bricks, and we can teach a wide variety of concepts. We excite and motivate young learners. They're short, simple exercises, and they help the students develop the ability to control their behavior in order to achieve a goal. Next one. I'm not gonna read all those, but those are just some of the skills that we can work on. Beginning at the little ones to sensory and motor, all the way up to high school. In our age, we can work on collaboration and communication skills. The five Cs of STEM are also in that one, that's all right. Go ahead. But my favorite things about the Six Bricks, when you do an activity, the Six Bricks activity with kids, they are completely engaged 100%. They're making sense of language and vocabulary. There's a lot of spatial skills and perceptual skills they're working on and learning. They're learning to remember specifics and details, and they're processing tasks and managing completion of a task. That's just the snippet. So we've got three short exercises that we're gonna show you guys today. One is our traditional build activity. We work on communication and collaboration in this type of skill, and we can do various degrees of difficulty. So what we're gonna do is we have Partner One. Are you building? Partner One has a picture right here, and she's gonna give directions to Partner Two. Pardon, Ava cannot see the picture, and Quinn is not allowed to direct her other than verbally. She can't, you know, sometimes you're putting things together, you're gonna help somebody, you want to grab it, right? She can't do that. She's just gonna use her verbal skills to tell them. Her verbal skills to tell Ava how to build. And if Ava doesn't understand something, she's gonna say, "I don't understand, can you say that again?" So, you ready to go, Quinn? You open it up, don't let her, no peeking, no peeking around?
Need all your bricks. The green and the orange bricks are on the bottom. The red is on the side, eight to eight, on both of them. Scoop them up a little bit. The yellow brick on top of the red brick, right, just like it on eight to eight. And then your dark blue brick on the yellow brick on top, eight to eight. And then the white blue brick, just like the dark blue.
I want to give this student a chance to go, too. Oh, yellow. Upside out.
Green, orange. The yellow on the bottom. Put the red one on top of the yellow, eight to eight. Orange on top of the red, eight to eight. Green on top of the orange, four. Dark blue on top of green, eight to eight. Red blue on top of the dark blue, eight to eight.
Amy, one question. I notice the kids are saying eight to eight, four, or whatever. Is that a vernacular that they develop themselves, or?
That is something I taught them.
Okay.
Well, we have the long sides are called sides, the short ends are called ends. Studs up, oriented bricks on top, we line up edges, we line up lines across, we say turn, slip over, just move in whatever direction is appropriate. You ready to do the next one? Okay, another good thing for Six Bricks is like quick checks or warm-ups, where you want to use them to do an order of steps. I can go to the next slide. I've assigned some numbers to the colors of the bricks, and they're gonna order the bricks from the smallest number up to the largest number. And smallest number on the bottom, guys, just look on that screen or you can look on this screen. Oh, do you have bricks? Right there. Smallest on the bottom, largest on top. That we do. What's the smallest number?
10.
Oh, I'm sorry, you still have to count. What comes after 10? What's next?
11.
11, then comes?
12.
And then?
20.
21, and then? These numbers right here are the dreaded ones and twos. It's hard for kids, for first graders and kindergartners, to remember 11 and 12 and 21. They transform a lot. So that's a good activity for them. We have one more activity to show you, which is a great activity for mental math, and we have an activity mat right here. The activity mats have numbers 1 through 5 on them. So you guys, I'm gonna start your works now on, all on four, please. All on four. So I'm gonna announce a color, and I'm going to announce a number. And they're gonna move the bricks straight up or they're gonna straight down, they don't cross over. So what they're doing is they're listening. And they're short-term memory, they're remembering the color and then the number that follows. And then they're gonna have to move, take a move, and kind of batch it up the thinking a little bit. You guys all ready? All right, here we go. Dark blue, wait, dark blue five. Red, two. White blue, three. Yellow, two. Green, one. Now we're warmed up, so we'll do some mental math. Yellow, six minus three. White blue, five minus one. Red, eight minus four. Green, 10 minus five. Dark blue, nine minus seven. Yellow, five minus three. Green, 10 minus eight. We're almost there, guys. Red, four minus two. Yellow, seven minus, where did I say red? Did I say red? My short-term memory. Light blue, seven minus five. Orange, three minus one. So if we're listening and keeping up, we now have all of our bricks on line number two. And what was the brick that we moved last?
Orange.
Orange, all right, very good. So, we're doing mental math, we're listening to details, and we're putting it over there. It's great, and until we start low, and then we, I go fast. Well, I'm going fast. But, I'm not done. You want to go give them all the, go hide, give them all set of bricks. Ladies, you have them now?
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna go hide, give them all in paper. This pile there, all of them. Please find the screen.
Thank you so much.
Go give everybody's work.
While they're handing them out, I want to add, Ms. Pritchard has included in the main additional things, and done alphabet letters, energy, words. Anything that you possibly can try to make sure that they already made. And when I come in and observe classrooms, it is as silent as this room is. Every child is fully ready to go. It's a great way to do it.
I'm just, first thing, are you using that in all classrooms?
Ms. Pritchard has been, yes, she's been pushing into different classrooms that the teachers are saying, "Come in and show us how to do it."
Yes. And that has been done all year.
And Ms. Pritchard has done PD with teachers on this, over the previous days, and it's been, I have to promise.
And actually, Mary was helping me back this summer to teach other teachers.
Oh, that's awesome!
You guys, so your parents out, or you just sit and do?
We're helping Dr. Berger.
All right, put all your bricks on the three. All your bricks on the three. Did you get bricks?
Did.
Oh, you already got, okay. All right. Here we go. Green, two. Light blue, one. Dark blue, four. Yellow, five. Red, the square root of 16. What? Orange, 13 minus 10 plus 1.
13 minus 10.
Plus 1. Green, the prime factor of 12 that is not 2.
Say that again.
Prime factor of 12 that is not 2.
Don't look!
Light blue, the square root of 25 minus 3. You can use it for higher grades, right? This is what I've been... Yellow, negative 1 times negative 2. Red, the square root of 9 minus 1. Dark blue, the exponent of the function y equals x cubed. The exponent of the function y equals x cubed. This is for higher grades, too. Orange, orange, number of corners of a cube, the number of corners a cube has, minus 6. Light blue, the cubed root of 27. And that's where I'm...
I can't handle it.
And that's where I'm starting. Very brave up there in front of everyone.
And they can see my board.
So we're gonna stop there. All of your warm colors should be on two, and all of your cool colors should be on three.
Must have definitely been some warm colors.
Talk about dark blue.
We call them sun colors and earth colors, so your red, yellow, and orange should be on two, and the blues and the greens should be on three. Well, I was afraid to cheat off of these. Before we go, we can probably go bricks. That means from the top down, green, red, orange, light blue, dark blue, yellow. Green, red, orange, white blue, dark blue, yellow. And I want to thank the parents for bringing the kids tonight. You worked all day, and then you came here, so thank you very much.
No, seriously, thank you.
Well, I noticed that first grade math proficiency is 93%, so it seems like it works well with that. So, that's also a thing I always...
Well, what's great is that's a math standard. It is for those who fluently add and subtract in first grade from 10 mentally. So here, they're doing that activity, and they're having fun, but it's also fully engaging multiple parts of their brains. And it's really cool to see how engaged they are. All right, so I'll let them clean up.
Do you guys have any questions for our little guys here? They did a great job. Thank you so much. That was awesome, and thank you, parents, thank you so much. And I just did awesome, and thank you, parents, thank you so much.
Thank you. So one more thing that we, one of the things we like to honor, um, our volunteers and those that kind of just help our school do the great things that we do. We have so many that are now coming in and volunteering, and this month, um, we would like to honor and say thank you to Brittany Moss. Brittany, um, just came in and was like, "I, I wanna volunteer, I wanna help, how can I help?" She, she reached out to both, do two classrooms. She comes on a regular basis, is helping with just about anything they could ask for. Reading, helping with certain kids that she helped. Um, she's also helped with our Scholastic Book Fair. Um, just, just a great presence in the building, and we so much appreciate that, because it does take a village. We wanted to tell her thank you. Thank you. We cannot do it without you.
Thank you. I feel appreciated. Thank you.
This is good, and thank you, those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Any other questions for Dawn before we move on? Alright, um, CSET reports. Any questions about the special ed? May, um, central office report? East? Oh, go ahead.
Either high school, from a attendance standpoint, is tracking below ninety percent beginning of the year. I know it, the end is a year, but what are we doing to improve that?
Yeah, the, the only thing that comes to mind, Doug might have told me, I know we have our, it on administrative retreat to, to revisit, uh, to try to see what we are doing currently, evaluate what works, and try to come up with some new strategies. So it's a, it is a, a, a topic of administrative retreat, as it is right now, anyway, drafted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are surveys included in that idea? Asking parents why?
I don't know, the, I mean, we, I, so they're not a current practice, and we haven't got there yet, but it may be. That's, that's not a bad suggestion. East board report? High school? And the middle school? So I have a, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll.
Okay, so for each principal that's in this room tonight, that had to do, and of course, our math exams. I kinda want your one or two sentence, um, idea about how it went, how you think it went this year. So, starting with Matt in the room. Brooks? Yeah, so how'd it go this year? You've been great.
We'll be glad to hear.
Are you, is that a guarantee?
I'll watch you well.
Okay, um, I just, Dr. Brandis, oh, Dr. Brandis.
Yeah, if you wanna apologize on there, I did mix the numbers up between the textbooks checked out and the nurses' business, so if you reverse that, my mistake on there. It's, we actually have a lot more books checked out than nurses' business. Teachers did amazing. Shout out to Alex Muzzi, shout out to our counselor, Mrs. Milner, and the teachers that help put kids and teachers in really good testing environments. And just one of the lead measures we noticed is, we've cut the amount of time, uh, or we've increased the amount of testing sessions that kids have spent more than fifteen minutes on. So, we feel confident that they're taking it serious, they're using their tools, um, and we're just monitoring the lead measures we can. So I think we'll do well.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's gone well at West, too. Uh, we're about to wrap up, like, you know, Dr. Brandis for a little too. Uh, big thanks to Alex Muzzi, big thanks to Mackenzie Lewis, she's been dragging hard on that. Uh, the kids, some kids have been coming up to me unsolicited, telling me that they felt like their, uh, they, uh, the stuff they do in class is a lot tougher than what they saw, uh, without getting, you know, without talking too much about the test. Uh, so, uh, I'm feeling good. I don't have any guarantees, but, uh, but, uh, I'm feeling confident that, uh, we're gonna match or, uh, outpace last year.
And Kelly? She, she not here? Oh, she is not, no. Okay. Matt's a pinch hitting, but for the blindside question, why don't you speak for Kelly? Hey, just go with that guarantee thing, if you know. So seriously, I mean, from the, from a special ed perspective, Doug, bit of focus, for sure. How, how are we looking there, you think, in terms of, have you, any, any clue? If you don't have a clue, that's fine.
No, I mean, I, I, we'll, we'll find out. I mean, I, we were tracking that all year long.
Through, through.
In our evaluate assessments, and we've been showing growth in those areas, so we just hope that that was a accurate measure of what we're gonna be.
But one thing I would share there, at least, um, for the high school, if you look at our, those yearly progressions on the evaluate, we've got a lot less red, and a lot of, you know, and I noticed that in our Spex scores monthly, too. Moving more of that to orange, and even some of that into proficient. So, I mean, that hopefully trends well, but, yeah, I don't know for sure on that one. It will be up. But, from the evaluate, we've had progress.
So bottom line, we didn't have any, we didn't have any technology glitches this year. Everything seemed to go smooth, all the kids, you know, were tested.
Yeah, one, two, or three kids might've got kicked out, but we got them back in.
We even had, I'd like to, you know, congratulate Mr. Brooks and his team. We did have Desi in for a site visit, uh, for our high school, and went well.
Miss Pritchard did a lot, we didn't do that, you took, yeah, a lot of the questions.
Okay, Kyle, I'm gonna let you go next, and then Erin, after you.
Uh, mine's more recognition for the teachers that I called out in various reports, so I kinda stood out my list here. Uh, Ms. Crowe, first and foremost, uh, they held a kickbook, uh, kickball tournament this year to raise money for fifth grade camp, uh, inaugural event there. Uh, impressively, they raised thirty-three hundred dollars. Uh, Ms. Muzzi was instrumental in that, so I just wanna recognize her. Uh, at East with Men Pickman, there was a teacher, Ms. Gamble, who, uh, put together a new initiative to basically connect kids outside of school with, like, similar hobbies, um, and connecting them with their peers, and their peers' parents, I thought that was unique, you know, fun way to strengthen our student bond outside of school. Uh, also, Men Pickman, I appreciate your behavioral data that you had in your report, and I really liked the trend of it going down over the last two years, looking at, so that. Uh, Dr. Bormy Grif, um, for me personally, interesting to see something, uh, reference about DBQ, their document-based question by Ms. Sessner. I haven't heard that since I was a senior in high school, being taught by Coach Brooks, uh, in support of the DBQs, where it gives a course exam. Um, and also like your shout out on how we sort of circle and help students, um, reach that by listening and understanding different points of views. And then finally, Coach Brooks, your shout out from Ms. Terny, and what she's done with, at FFA this year. Um, she's done natural, it's a neat job, and just wanted to recognize her.
Thank you, Kyle, for that. Erin, did you hear anything additional?
Um, I am just gonna put in another plug, um, that we bring back, um, some sort of map recognition for our kids that, um, get advanced on our map test. We put a lot of effort into that. Um, I know my kid, well, one of them, uh, now is excited about, um, seeing what her growth is gonna be, um, you know, every year. And so I just think that's a really neat way we do so much to recognize athletes. I think it's really important that we can recognize our kiddos that, um, you know, are, are the reason that we're getting really good scores on things. I mean, you know, teachers. Being able to recognize our students, not necessarily in the same format, maybe, but, um, just some sort of recognition for those kiddos.
Anybody else? Okay. Does anybody else have anything else they wanna say? About the CSET reports? Okay, next item is, um, high school, uh, high school and east addition update. Why don't we do the east first, since the high school's probably gonna take up a little bit more time? So you wanna go with the east first? Yeah.
Um, so, I don't know if any, how many of you guys have been out there, but, um, brick started going up this week. Um, so there's a couple of photos, just progress photos. Um, that's the, the block with the vapor barrier on it. Um, the steel, steel beams are down to the roof, metal decking, roofing is on. Um, brick will continue going up next week. Doors, windows are on order, it'll be here June, July, and starting to go in. Um, sprinkler system, I believe, is partially in. Um, it's, it's really something to look at now, if you do go, while they're, um, just taking, um, shape. The, the inside is, is continuing the same. The walls are up, they're working on all the infrastructure, they'll start putting up, uh, electrical and, um, rest of the plumbing that's not, you know, below grade and that type of thing. Any questions?
There's, you know, there's a lot of talk about the high school, the, the, and the disruption of the community there, but I've also heard some talk about at east, uh, the, uh, the pickup lines, the, there's debris in the way, and the kids having to walk over it. Is that, um, have you heard any complaints on that?
I haven't.
I've heard some, so.
We got one this week that I channeled, uh, Dr. Waring.
So Mary, we, we have meetings every two weeks, and so our meeting was yesterday with, uh, a spire down there. And so, there, there has been some mud the past, I'd say, four or five days or so, and so, um, they have cleaned up the mud, um, I think we brought up with them. Uh, I haven't heard of the debris, though, in the pickup line. Are you talking about mud? Are you talking about?
Probably, maybe mud, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we've had some mud issues.
Kids can't walk through it, they said, you know.
Yeah, and, and we did have masonry out there the other day, and usually, everybody's kinda off the job before we let out, but they were kinda in the middle of something, and so they continued through that today. And so we brought that up with them as well, that, just, giving us some communication, and Dawn's been great about running interference with them and things like that, and so.
Have you seen an issue with that, Dawn, with the pickup line?
I mean, we have the mud, um, but, yeah, you're, that's our only way of picking up, and it goes right past the site, so, um, when we get a hard rain, you're gonna, we're gonna get mud, um, but we work around it, and we pull the cars over, less away from where the rain and all that's coming through, and, um, we work really closely with Justin, who's the woman, and anytime I'm like, hey, you know, he's got something, he's out there, either personally shoveling it, or trying to get moved, or taking care of it as quick as they can, so. There's a little hard wind breaks going up, because there's a lot, there's a lot runoff that's coming, I mean, it's, it's, that's just.
I, I heard Sam complaining. I, I let him know, so.
So is the project, is that project on time and?
On time and on schedule.
On time and on schedule, great.
We're doing well there.
And on budget?
Yes.
On time, on schedule? Let's take on time and schedule.
What's our ETA? When is it going to be done?
I was, I was fifteenth, is the current date. Or try to defer it, or August first, I'd say, I think move in will be a little bit sooner, but, yeah, officially, it'll be, you know.
Any other questions on the east? Okay, um, anything else you got, Erin?
Nope, it was just those few photos, just progress. It's gonna look a lot better in a few more weeks.
Alright.
Cool. Thanks, Erin. We've got Bobby Christopher from Wright Construction, we'll get his stuff loaded up. I'm gonna take credit for this, Bobby, I asked for, I said, uh, that Zoom, uh, Zoom, the drone footage was pretty awesome this time that they provided, and I said, oh, show that for me, so if you'll, you remember, Sarah, I know that's, it's on proposition sixty-seven twenty-five, uh, web tab for all of our folks that wanna see it, it's pretty neat, so. I have to ask, can I steal your thunder?
No, he didn't steal it. I love it, too, so, whatever.
So slides are drone footage?
Probably gonna start with Bobby. I'm sorry. Your slides or your?
Oh, the drone footage would be great, I'm sorry. My hearing's pretty bad, too.
Bobby, is there any way I could have you stand closer to the, um, I call it, I just don't think we'll stand.
Yeah, absolutely, no, no problem. Can you hear me alright, Kyle?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, you didn't put the music in there?
I can only do so much.
She looks different already from being on site today. That's pretty awesome.
I, I believe that was taken May ninth.
Give us a little, we could, um, tell us where we're at.
Sure, yeah, so, obviously, that square section right there, those rectangles, that's the building pad itself. Uh, so that's compacted screenings that the, uh, foundation contractors dig through that for their, they're footing foundation floors. Um, it's working up towards Volker Road here, uh, kinda flying off to the, I guess that'd be the southwest. Uh, that, currently, the, where you see all those trucks, that's the laydown area for the earth, earthwork and concrete subs at the moment. Uh, once we, well, fast forward about two weeks from now, just to the north of the building pad, the front left corner of the building pad, we're gonna pour that stretch of concrete. It's about another six hundred yards. We're utilizing that for our laydown areas, most of our equipment will be over there, uh, over that area at that time. We've got a, a concrete pour that already passed us up here, but it's in the front by the job trailer, that's where we're utilizing for, you know, really personal vehicles, that type of use, and, and for folks that come in for meetings, that's our, our staging area for the meeting, uh, meetings and the job trailer. It's a large site, so right now, we're, we're pretty much cut off at the pass right there at the creek. Uh, that's where the box culvert is gonna go in, uh, here in a few months. Uh, we're waiting on the band survey, survey to take place, so we can proceed ahead with that work. Uh, once we get the clearance, that's actually the box culvert center, those pre-cast structures, uh, those concrete structures down the middle of the stream. Those get placed in the creek, and that'll ultimately be where the road overpasses over the highway out.
Jump to the presentation now?
Sure. Okay. Thank you, guys, for having me. And I'll address any questions here at the end, we'll run through the slides. Uh, so ongoing activities currently, uh, site survey, site, site staking, that's an ongoing activity, will be for many, many months. Uh, grading and excavations continuing, uh, between weather events. Uh, we've got site utilities in full steam, so site utilities is your, your water, your sanitary, your storm, uh, your fire protection loops, that type of thing. Uh, we're also doing underground electric at this time. Uh, building pad prep, so the building pad is fully prepped now, remediated, um, ready for foundations, and here in about four weeks, we'll be going vertical with, with steel and masonry. So again, footing and foundations have started, uh, foundation drains have started, and, uh, site concrete has started. Looking forward in the next, excuse me, the next three, four weeks, um, we're gonna continue on with the underground utilities. Uh, the box culvert, hopefully, we can get approval to get that placed. Uh, grading and excavation on the west half of the property, as soon as we get that structure in place, we'll, we'll begin. Excuse me, site concrete placement will continue. Uh, we're gonna do a lot of very large site pavement pours. We're also gonna have trucks coming in there every day for the footing and foundation stem wall pours. Uh, casting slabs will be here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, what a casting slab is, for the, the tilt-up concrete that's gonna make up the storm shelter. Uh, BJ, which is our concrete sub, will come out, pour these casting slabs, and then they actually build their panels on those casting slabs. Hoist them from there, and then you've got a vertical structure approximately thirty foot tall. Uh, so that's, that's some of the works coming up. And then continuing on with the underground MEP roughing. The difference between site utilities and MEP roughing, the MEP roughing is everything in the building pad. It's everything, essentially, that sits underneath the concrete slab. Next slide, please. Here's just some photos of the concrete curves, um, kind of live action shots, I guess you'd call it. On the left, we have a pump truck, um, actually, that's not even doing the curves, that's after the curves. Uh, they're pumping out concrete for about a six hundred yard pour that we got in front of the trailer. And then just on the right, um, it was a combination of, of pumping and dumping, so that's what you see there, the site concrete. Uh, here's the finished product of the site concrete, so this is probably about, I don't know, eight, eight hours or so after it's poured, sun's probably going down here. Uh, you've got a limited, limited time once you get it down to saw cutting. Uh, so this was saw cut after it's, you know, firmed up enough to do so. Uh, this picture, uh, I don't know if that time's right, I would say it was probably about three-thirty in the afternoon, though, this stuff was. Next slide, please. These are some of your ongoing site utilities, these are your big storm structures, uh, this outfall structure here on the right. Uh, this is over there at the corner, uh, the trouble corner that we've had. I guess it's the northwest corner, corner over towards fascinating there. Next slide, please. Uh, just a picture of a, a water line in a trench, uh, ready for inspection, ready to be backed though. And this is just an overall drone still shot that we had of the, as much of the site as we could find in one shot. Uh, this next slide, I'm sorry. It's the three-week look-ahead schedule. Now this one, we update these every week, this one's a few weeks old now from when we put the agenda together. Again, it's got a lot of the activities we already talked about. Uh, the areas you see in red, those are areas that we consider behind schedule for whatever reason, uh, building footings. Shows us, showed it red at this time, but actually, area A that we're at, we're working on, will be done by the time we said it would be done from the original schedule. So really, the only thing. So really the only thing we're being held up on at the moment is everything with the box culvert and everything east of that creek. I believe the next slide is just master schedule. So we update these monthly. They're turned in right around the time of our pay up, pay application. So these are updated, what you see in blue. When you hit the actual dates, that populates the actual activities start date where you're at currently. If you see a line item in red, that's a critical path activity. If you see it in green, that's just a standard work activity. So if you're seeing this in the months coming up, what you see in red is what's the longest path that's a critical path and that is the most critical path to get the project complete. Any questions on that?
Yes, Bobby, I apologize, I think you have recent details of this schedule, but with the box culvert at the creek, I think I heard you say something along the way, you might be a couple of months out on that. Any concerns on that impact in the critical path at any point right now?
Yeah, there's a chance of it. Best case scenario, right now we're teed up to get the bat survey done, middle of June, we don't have a firm date on that. We're waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers to give us feedback on when that's gonna take place. We expect within two or three weeks of that, we'll get their, you know, their judgment, whether we get approval to proceed with the additional site clearing or if they come back and say we need to wait for site clearing for another period of time. We won't know until they come out and, you know, find what they find or find what they don't, you know, see what they don't find. So we won't know more till then. We'll continue to monitor that, monitor that as we update the schedule will be, you know, it'll, it'll be a good indicator of what you see. There's certainly activities over there that are delayed, whether or not it's, you know, ultimately gonna delay our critical path, it's too early to tell at this time. So hopefully not. We're hopeful it won't impact us.
All right, I appreciate that. And then I know this slide maybe took together, was a week or so old, the inclement weather that we had over this last week and a half, how many days have we lost now? There was two, but I assume it's probably an updated number.
Yeah, collectively, so the way that works is kind of like managing a checkbook. So every month, you've got a certain amount of weather days that are, what are considered average for that area. So the two days we were claiming, I believe was for the month, month of February, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of nine, nine or ten days and the average is seven to eight. So by doing that math, you know, we would ask for two days back at the end of the project should be needed. The intent is hopefully we don't need it and you never get day for day. We've had four weather days since our, our last owner meeting. We had our owner meeting today, we had one two weeks ago. So we've had four rain events since then. I have, we've got an ongoing record that's kept on some new exchange and then we send that over to the architect at the end of each month. So we're, I guess to answer your question around about way, we don't feel like we're at risk to push the schedule anyway, but we do monitor that and we'll, we'll ask for that if needed. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we talk about? Sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, can we talk about what happened this weekend?
Absolutely, sure.
And how that happened, why and how it's not gonna happen again?
I can promise it's not gonna happen again. So first off, we want to apologize to neighbors, the Fast Lane. It certainly wasn't malicious. It wasn't even negligence on our part. So the way SWIP works, SWIP stands for Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. What that is, it's an ongoing living document. As a contractor, it's a general contract that the engineer designs what that SWIP plan is gonna look like. We put that up, it's one of the first things that we do on a site. We monitor that weekly. We have third-party consultants that come out and monitor that weekly. And when they fail, you switch to what's called best management practices, BMPs. In this case, we had the first major rain event. It was Thursday night last week, well, I guess really Friday morning, but we were, you know, late in the morning. It was about four o'clock when that storm came through. Within two hours of that, we did have a contractor come out and address that. So it was muddy, it was wet, they addressed the silt fence. At that time, our superintendent used her judgment that it was too wet to do anything without causing additional damage. So when our superintendent was out there assessed, you know, there was damage done, all they could do was replace the silt fence at that time. It was too wet to get in there, you know, to bring rock in and clean that up, so that work didn't take place. It was scheduled for the following Monday. We then got hit with a storm Saturday and then again Sunday on Mother's Day. I was on the phone with my superintendent multiple times. Our plan was to come back Monday, muck that out, clean it up and get rock down. And that's what we did. We brought in rock, we took care of that. We're taking care of the gentleman at the courthouse there. We knew they were out of town, we don't, we can't go on their property with them not there. Superintendent established a plan with them and, you know, as they arrived tonight, they got a meeting in the morning, we're fully gonna address and make it better than it was, you know, the poor got damaged. So that's the best we can do with it. I can't promise that it's not gonna happen again. If it happens again, we'll, we'll correct it again. What we do to help prevent that.
What can you do to prevent it? Mary, let him talk.
So what we did today, well, not today, I guess it was Monday, they came in and cut diversion channels into those basins. So rather than that water coming all the way to the fence and bringing sediment with it, it's now diverting to those two channels. If you ever go on our job trailer, there's a site plan marked up. And what that is, it's a living document where we can't just go willy-nilly and change things, you know, that we feel like doing. We have to get engineer approval. So we make a modification to it. We timestamp that, we mark it up, we put a date on it, we send it to the engineer of record. They understand what's going on. We also send that to our SWIP inspector. They tell us, say, yeah, you know, yeah, that's an acceptable application or they say, hey, we need you guys to do more. And it's a living document, so there's no perfect science to make that work. And each one of these, where you have steep slope, and I've heard your comments, Mr. Zouh, we're not working backwards. You know, you can't put a retaining wall in and then make the cut. There's, there's a lot of steps to this, but it's not an arguing point. The fact is, you guys got sediment on your road. We're not proud of that, but there's nothing we can really do to control that. As a contractor, you know, we always kind of look like the villain because we're coming out and disturbing farmland or disturbing the area that maybe not everybody's necessarily happy, you know, that's coming to the area. We're there to do a job and we're there to do it right. And, you know, if I was in your shoes, Mr. Zouh, and I had what on my road, I wouldn't be happy about it either. And I'd want it addressed, but sincerely, I think we addressed it in an appropriate timeframe, so. Anything else on that?
I think that answers the question.
Sure.
Sir, real quick? No. It's just, underneath the road, there's a, there's a culvert that they put in ten years ago. This is a business meeting and you can address with the contractor outside.
Roger.
So any other, from the board perspective, any other questions?
I will. My brother lives on that road.
Sure.
I think, referring to what the gentleman's saying, I think there's a culvert, another culvert that runs diagonal underneath Fast Lane.
Keeps the water from flowing between the two houses.
Yeah, and they probably need to get that opened up. I think the mud and rock got in there and has that choked up for, in the future.
Yeah, and our superintendent's aware of that. They're getting ready to clean that out. One of the next things we're doing, there's RCP pipe, that is your storm piping through there. As soon as the conditions allow, they're gonna run that back through also, so that'll, I believe that's a fourteen inch pipe, twelve or fourteen inch pipe, so it's larger than what's there. They'll pick up more valuable water than what it currently does. We're doing our best to improve it, it's just.
I just wanted to mention that.
Is there, Dave, were you done?
It just, that's probably on that Brennan's property, I believe.
It is.
So that's probably part of the reason, but I just want to bring that up as well.
And there is other work on Mr. Brennan's property.
So let's not use names. So just say individuals property.
Absolutely. So we don't want to be individuals property. We're doing a retaining wall in there that changes the elevation of that yard. Essentially, that household's gonna get a new yard completely anyway, once the construction's done.
That's the one on the corner?
Yes, ma'am.
Was there any impact to their foundation basement or we don't know yet?
We were told no, but I've never been into investigating.
I assume that, well, when they get back.
To my knowledge, the only, the only issue there is the sediment that came out of the front yard on the driveway.
Yeah, Bobby, if I may, to Heidi's, I know we had the owner with progress meeting today. Craig's meeting with him.
Tomorrow morning first.
Seven o'clock, right, seven-thirty. So, you know, we have been in contact with the owner and then I plan on being there too, so I think we're, we'll be on that, but it's, it's a concern, certainly.
Absolutely. It's on the forefront of mine and we are making improvements there, to do everything we can to prevent it. If we get a four inch downfall or even a two inch downfall, I promise it's not gonna happen again. I can't, I'd be a liar if I told you I could, but we're doing our best to prevent it.
And I know this is a complete guesstimate, but do you have an estimate of when dirt work, the retaining wall, that corner of the property will be complete, semi-completed or?
Yeah, it's, well, the process now is starting. The retaining wall is scheduled to start towards the tail end of next week. It might end up being, you know, the Tuesday after Memorial Day, but they are set up to start that work. It is an ongoing process, it's a work in progress. It's gonna take weeks, not days, but that will get improved. And when we do the site concrete over in that area as well, as we pour that laydown area, I'm gonna call it, that's gonna help some of the shedding as well.
And how long is that concrete out?
We're about, we're about a week and a half out.
So not six months? I mean, a matter of months, right?
Right, right. And we're doing what we can. There's a tricky intersection right there where you go from eight inch concrete to six inch concrete. The retaining wall's a factor in that, so we can't go after all of that at one time, but we're gonna selectively go after everything we can. That's it.
Okay, from the board perspective, any other questions for Wright Construction?
I just have a comment. I just appreciate they're doing everything you can because, you know, we're moving out there and we want to be good neighbors and we don't want to start off on a bad note and everything, you know, so just appreciate you doing everything that you can to, to help prevent that from ever happening.
Yes, ma'am. Then we will. I promise you that.
Anything else from the board?
I don't know if this is necessarily you're in charge of question, but what about Relker? Like the, I know there were some issues with maybe the thickness of that wall.
So under paper today, there was an article where you're gonna take the steel plates up and they're going to put?
The rock.
Put the rock in there.
We've been in contact with the city, I mean, it's still your time here, but we, I've seen that article as well. What's going on right now, we're dealing with staging areas, the city's staging areas to stage rock. And as those plates come up and as the road is further in back, they're gonna go back and backfill those with rock. They've done that in a couple of locations already. It's all up pretty good. It's a Band-Aid for now until the city comes up with a plan on ultimately what the fix is gonna be. Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board?
Is Wright paying for that rock to city or what's out on the podium?
The city's paying for that rock.
Thank you.
The, two separate rock items, the rock for Rolker Road, that is by the city, all the sediment that was moved out, rock that was replaced on Fast Lane, that's paid by the contractors. So that's, that's our subcontractor.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? All right. I'm sure you're gonna get some questions outside from the neighbors.
Sure, and I'm happy to answer some questions, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, bud. So if you have a question for the general contractor, he'll meet you in the corner.
Can you address it? That's, that's all I wanted to say is that there is that other culvert over there that you mucked out. That'll keep the water from flowing in my house and his house.
Where's your house at?
Under 152.
So moving on in our agenda, Boys and Girls Club of America After School Program. Dr. White, White will introduce our guest.
She came about thirteen months ago. We went into a partnership with Boys and Girls Club of St. Charles County and we had Karen there at the time, the CEO, and Karen is back tonight and it's been our first year and she's gonna kind of go over how the year's gone and what can we expect for next year.
Perfect.
Yep, thanks Karen.
Absolutely. Send them this corner, is that okay?
Nothing.
All right. Okay. So first of all, thank you so much for having us out. We are wrapping up our first year of after school program in partnership with the district. It has been, I think, a wonderful experience. We've definitely had some learning curves that we, someone anticipated and so nothing has happened where I can either partner in and it's been like, whoa, can't do it. You know, we, we figured some things out, we, we've learned and we've been able to serve a lot of kids and we're really, really proud of that. So you can per guest in this just backstory. All right, so in terms of kind of who we are, we are a chartered organization of Boys and Girls Clubs of America, but that is kind of the national arm and then locally, there's, or not locally, but across the country, there's five thousand different clubs of Boys and Girls Clubs. So that five thousand doesn't mean like individual units. So for us, Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Charles County, we have three units, but we still count as one club of that five thousand. So I mean, there's, you know, fifteen plus thousand club units across the country. So we bring a lot of kind of history with this, we bring a lot of expertise with youth development. We get the authority to act in our local community's best interest though, which we really like. There's certainly things that are kind of set at the national level that we have to abide by and we do, especially with child safety, we are all about that. But we really get to kind of figure out the local feel of our community and what's going to work best in every situation. So this just kind of has an overview of who we are and what we've been doing for the last sixty-eight years in St. Charles County. So this is a snapshot of who we actually served this year. So thinking about, kind of, we, we know the district obviously has many levels to it. We have really only focused on our elementary age students. And so we have been at West Elementary all year long and Matt has been a gracious host for us in that timeframe, which we truly appreciate. And then we do have kids that come from East Elementary and they are bused over from east to west for the after school program. So in terms of total registered numbers, when we went in, our goal was fifty. That was what we wanted to be at. Before school even started, we had hit fifty and we had close to a hundred on the waiting list. So we're responding to a need and we're really, really happy about that. I can't look at increasing that much though, given kind of the space structures of what it is, right? We're, we're coming into your school, we're using your space and, you know, it's different at our other locations because they're standalone buildings, right? The whole building is ours, so we can take hundreds of kids. It's different in a school setting and we know that. But we've ended up with sixty-four total registered. Part of that is, in some cases, some kids were registered, they attended and they might have had some educational needs that were outside of the scope of what we could really do, which we, we have to make that decision all the time. You know, the, the staff that we have, they're not trained educators. I'm one of the few that, you know, has experience in a classroom and all those pieces. The rest primarily are working through to get a college degree in education, working on internships, practice camps, but they just don't have kind of that level of skill in some cases that's really required, especially for some of your students with higher level IEP needs. We always want to give them a shot, but we just know in some cases, it's just not gonna[1632.94] be the best fit. Um, so our average daily attendance, we refer to that as our ADA all the time, um, we're at forty-eight, so we're right at that fifty mark, meaning on any given day, there's gonna be forty-eight kids that are participating in the after school program. Um, also kinda breaks down just demographics of, you know, gender and age and grade and all of that, some people really wanted this data, and I wasn't sure, so you get it for whatever that's worth. Um, we have served very few fifth graders, we're really kinda, third grade is kinda where we tap out in terms of kids who really, really participate, um, you know, we always encourage the older ones to stay involved, because you start getting that ten and eleven and you're home alone and lots of fun things happen then, so, you know, as much as we can encourage some of our fourth and fifth graders to stay involved, we would like that as well. So this is just a snapshot of some of the services, the programs that we've provided this year and the number of sessions that were accomplished. Um, so again, we have three core pillars within our organization, one is academic achievement, the other is healthy lifestyles, and the other is character and leadership development. And so anything we do program wise, all of these programs, they always fit under one of those three categories. Um, and so you kind of look at the, the areas where we were, um, you know, we were able to hit a lot of the benchmarks we were really looking for, we had hoped to be able to do a little bit more in terms of kinda the Power Hour and Project Learn, but some of that really requires more access to computers, which we didn't have, and so we kinda had to modify and do some shifts with that, um, but really been able to accomplish a lot of programs with the kids, and for a lot of these that you see like smart moves and positive action, all of those come with a pre-test and a post-test score, so we're really able to look to see, okay, you know, how are they doing, have they made progress, have they stayed the same, have they gone backwards? Um, and so, we like that there's lots of measurables, because I feel like we can tell a better story. So when we put together as an organization kind of our estimate, and it was going into it, our estimate about what the program was gonna cost, um, this is a snapshot simply of wages, so payroll costs, um, but our overall estimate of the program, the first year in, we have budgeted a hundred and eight thousand, and it's what we would spend as an organization to bring this program to West, to Wright City. Um, and so we have trended above budget unfortunately for a lot of it, probably like many other people have, because you can tell how much wages keep going up and how much the cost of pool of pay per year is, right? I mean, it's just the cost across the board have been higher. Um, so if you look, kinda, we budgeted close to sixty thousand for payroll, and we're right now sitting at about seventy-four thousand in payroll. Um, so we bring this up in part, just to continue to have the conversation of, we do this because we know that there's need and we wanna respond to that need. Um, the first year of the program, any of the families who had kids that were registered and attended, they paid only twenty-five dollars, that's a whole school year, right? And you can't get anything for twenty-five dollars, especially after school, you know, programming that includes structured activities and, you know, kind of all those pieces. Uh, we have, as we've moved into now, looking at year two, we have increased that to fifty dollars a child, in part just because we, we ran ahead on some of these budget numbers. Our cost per member typically to provide services, more in our standalone units, is over fifteen hundred dollars. And so when we think about if families are paying twenty-five and we have to figure out the other fifteen hundred, um, we're having to make some kind of adjustments to try to do that, but again, to not put our families in a situation where they can't afford, we never want transportation to be a barrier and we don't want costs to be a barrier. Um, so, um, yeah, this is just kind of a snapshot of that. I do wanna just so thank this community, um, you know, we have started to kind of set up some roots here, we got a lot more work to go with that, um, but really, it's, it's been great, um, I know somebody earlier talked about, um, FFA, like, the kids have had so much fun doing those programs, um, they just started to work this, what, two months ago with Master Gardeners, and they're finished their last week of gardening, um, there were raised beds that really had, nobody had been doing anything with, so they were out there and planting and growing and all of those things, um, you know, and so it's definitely kind of the, the hands-on learning that they benefit from, we don't want them just to have to sit there, they've sat in school all day, not staff, but they have, they have been in a very structured setting all day. Uh, but we're also trying to find the balance of, it still needs to be structured, so we don't see behaviors that are crazy, but also give them a little bit of fun opportunities as well. I also just cannot speak highly enough about Key Club, Key Club has been wonderful, like, so thank you to our high school partners for bringing those kids over, these kids love when Key Club shows up, they have so many, it's true, I've had with them, I mean, they, you know, it's a big kid, it's something to visit, so they get really excited. Um, so really, we just wanna thank you, I mean, so much of this conversation started with Mary and a diner, right? And so it's been neat to kinda see it come to fruition, and we're excited to be back for another year, um, and it's always our goal to be a good partner, so if we're not meeting the standards, please let us know, if there's something we need to be doing different, let us know. Um, and again, thank you to Matt, we, we, you know, kinda took over his cafeteria and Jim for the year, um, and he has been very gracious in looking at us.
Any questions?
Do you have your enrollment and waitlist numbers yet for next school year?
No, we haven't started it yet, um, we're getting past, last year we opened enrollment, I think in July, um, and like I said, we, we maxed out.
Is this fifty the same number you're shooting for, or are you shooting for higher?
We're gonna have to shoot for fifty just because of building configuration, you know, when you have fifty kids and you have a cafeteria and a gym, that's really only kind of two separate locations where you can put them. Um, so Matt has arranged for us to have access to the art room, which will help us a little bit, but I think that'll help more with kind of crowd control, if I'm being honest, because again, you end up with fifty kids in, in one setting and it can get a little loud, um, and we don't wanna be noisy neighbors, um, but for us to really look at expanding, we would either have to look at having another site at East or, you know, somewhere else to really be able to do that, I think we have maxed West out to, to probably our capabilities, probably especially with this maintenance crew, they're probably like, yeah, that's good, good to get.
And did you, I have one more question, I'm sorry, did you say how many staff members you had there?
Right now we have, what, six?
Uh, seven right now, but when we started-
Hello, I'm Rick.
I'm sorry, Rick is our director of programs, he knows way more probably about the day-to-day than I ever will.
So when we started out at the beginning of the school year, we were, we were struggling with the labor shortage like everyone else was, and, uh, we typically try to keep a, a ratio of one to twelve, um, and we were stretched pretty thin for till January-ish, and then we were able to start hiring more, and we've hired a couple of people who are currently Paris for the school district, and, um, so we're at, we're at seven right now, so we're, we're much closer to ratio. Um, so we, once we, we got that, that seven, uh, seven people for our staff, then we were able to break them up into smaller groups and, um, you know, it's, it's really hard to put them all into one room and, and host three or four different learning sessions, right? So, um, so yeah, so, and, and also I wanted to add too, the, the fifty cap, um, we've, we hit our fifty cap, but we always kept the door open for hardship cases.
Yes.
So, um, we were in a lot of communication with West and East, um, with families that are just in dire straits, and, and we've done everything we could to bring them in as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cal, do you have any questions?
Cal, do you have any questions?
Anybody else?
I do. If you-
Go ahead, I'll go on to you.
Oh, um, if you had to look at a crystal ball, um, what would that say about opening up a, like a timeline for a second location just with the, you know, the growth that our area is having?
To me, it's not so much a, a challenge of, well, okay, let me go back, definitely there's some timing factors involved with it, right? Staff is going to continue to be a challenge, and I would love to just say we're automatically gonna have enough staff to do X, Y, Z, but for me, part of it is really gonna be the hard dollars behind it, um, you know, and, and we've been candid, I mean, I told Dr. White, I was like, you know, we, we budgeted a hundred and eight thousand on a loss for year one, but we can't do it for year two and three and four and five, and so, um, we're trying to find some creative ways to engage some of your local community to look at, will they sponsor kids, will they sponsor a program, and kinda offset some of those things. We were also able to secure some state funding, after October of last year, we had to go through official chartering process, and so we've been able to get some of those grants repeated, um, and so there's always potential for that to help offset some of it. Um, I think for us to continue kind of looking in the air, we would just really wanna make sure that we're meeting the, the biggest needs that you feel like you have as a district, right? So maybe it's your middle school, maybe it's the kids that always end up at a library instead of, you know, and I see head nods, because every district we are in, they all go to the library, um, and cause problems, and so, um, you know, really kinda having a thoughtful conversation about that, and then just, you know, is there a way for us to get closer to even in thinking about how to do it? You know, do it for the money, but we still have to do our business.
Yeah.
Part of, part of the ability to hire more staff was our, our board, let's stand up so you can see, our board had approved, uh, an increase in the budget for payroll, and that's, that's what enabled us to get more, so we, we went from hiring people at twelve to thirteen an hour to fifteen to seventeen based off of credentials, and then we were able to, to get some quality people hired in.
We also were able to hire two of your high schoolers, and that's been really fun?
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, they've been, and they come over and work with us.
Okay.
I appreciate you mentioning the Key Club because that's something, you know, kinda dear to my heart, the Quanis Club, so they're, they're a group, they've been a fantastic group to work with this year.
And our unit coordinator at, at your school site is a member of the Quanis Club now, so again, we're, we're trying to kinda put some of those roots down and, you know, we were-
She's been volunteering at our, our sports closet and different things, she's a great girl.
Thank you.
And my question, tied already to you a little bit, was just curious how your investments funded for this, because twenty-five bucks a head or fifty bucks a head next year, we're coming over close to covering that, so I think you alluded to it with some, some grant money and some other things, so that's what my question was.
Yeah, I mean, grant money is, is huge, and I mean, I think for anybody who deals though with state and federal funds, you know the amount of paperwork that goes into that, and it's great, um, and so another thing we really look at is kind of our large-scale fundraising events, um, and so actually, we had a parent from Wright City volunteer at our gala, um, and so just kind of looking for ways to, again, kind of deepen those partnerships and understanding that, yes, we're Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Charles County, but we serve kids in Wright City, we serve kids from St. Louis, who just happen to be based in that county.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, we continue to look forward to that partnership.
Yes, we do.
All right, we appreciate you. Are you organization?
Hey, you, it's okay.
Well, you know what?
Thank you.
All right, have a good day. You gonna let, she's struggling a little. Need a break? You good? Quit looking at her, I think. All right, moving on to summer school pay, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, I'll report on, uh, this first part of, I guess by preamble, that we've had four meetings, salary committee meetings, two, that's two at the elementary, two at the high school, uh, this issue kind of came from that, from the feedback I got from salary, those have been great meetings, anxious to bring you, uh, more information on that in the budget workshop, uh, and the proposal when we, uh, for the regular board meeting in June, but this became, kinda expedited because we needed to recruit teachers and aides this, you know, for this summer school. So it was brought to my attention that we hadn't looked at summer school, uh, at least three years and probably more like five in terms of pay, did a real quick comp on this, and that's, uh, available to you there in your notes, and so the, uh, some of that, I guess, those efforts are, we'd like to raise the pay for classified, uh, certified staff three dollars an hour, and our, and our teachers, I know that's a little, I think the board's in tune with that, but, uh, they're paid hourly too also for summer school, those aides are always for, for the regular year too.
And what's the fiscal note?
About twenty thousand dollars.
The numbers that we're seeing, does that include the three dollars an hour raise or not?
No, it does not, so that, yeah.
Thirty and seventeen.
You're right, that's correct.
Any other questions?
The hourly rate of aides that we've felt warranted, just out of curiosity.
Oh, I, okay, I see what you're saying, uh, I do not know, off, off the cuff, I don't know. So it, what that's referring to is that is their regular hourly rate, so whatever they're making in the regular school year goes right into summer school for those two schools.
So we could look at the salary schedule for that?
Right, yeah, I just don't know, right off the cuff.
So is there a difference between our summer rate and regular rate?
Yeah, our, our summer rate would be below the regular rate, I'm, I'm confident, I would say it's low, uh, I'm more confident in saying that with Winsfield, but Warrington has had a real struggle, it's been there, you know, publicly, uh, for the last couple, three years, uh, but all staffing like we all are, particularly with aides, so I think they probably did that in, in an effort to bring in summer school aides, just brought that, that rate across the board, you know, from the regular school year right into summer school.
So I think the answer to your question is, we're paying less for summer school than we are during the regular year, I think that was the question that was asked.
Uh, teachers make less and aides make less, that's right. Thank you, for what tracking on that.
I think that was the question.
Yeah. Nice.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion.
The confirmant didn't approve, it would be thirty an hour for teachers and seventeen an hour for aides, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
This also actually includes our, another little nuance here, our administrators are paid hourly, uh, for that, so that would include all classified and certified staff, so the administrators would be, you know, three dollar, uh, an hour increase too. That's not comp because it's, among every school does something different administrative, sometimes part of the regular contract, uh, sometimes it's a stipend, you know, it's, so, uh, but it does include those folks too.
Taylor, weren't you a summer school administrator before?
No, sir.
I know we, one of the things that we did with it was that was a good way for our aspiring administrators to get, get, um, experience.
Yeah, Missouri Darius, our aspiring admin, Linda's doing it, she did it last year, and she's doing it this year.
Okay, any motion to approve the administration recommendation for summer school certified and classified pay rate increase by three dollars per hour?
Still moved, seconded.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Cal, did you vote yes on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, program evaluation, career ladder, Dr. Berger?
Yep, throwing the next two agenda items to Dr. Berger.
So guys, if you look in the program evaluation, so let's talk career ladder, if, if we remember back to September, October, Dr. Berger said, hey, uh, I don't think we've ever done this in our district, or we're, we're moving forward and we're doing this, and so, uh, we were kinda flying a little blind to begin with in October on it, uh, but as you can see, we had a hundred and fifteen of our teachers that were eligible for career ladder this year, out of those hundred and fifteen, sixty of them took us up on the offer, and so what makes them eligible? So there's stage one, two, and three, um, in stage one, our teachers need to have completed two years, um, in Missouri schools, um, stage two is three, and stage five, I'm sorry, stage three is five years, and so the stipends go fifteen hundred, three thousand, and five thousand. It also depends on the number of hours they work, so on stage one, it's fifty hours, stage two is seventy-five, and stage three is a hundred hours. Um, if you look in the program evaluation, Elizabeth, if you go to page two, we just tried to break it down a couple of different ways about, uh, who all participated based on buildings, uh, as you can see, high school in West kinda led the charge with number of teachers enrolled in career ladder, um, but if you look at the, the next box there, where it talks about what levels, as you can see, we had way more in level three than we had in level one and two, uh, this first year, um, and again, that was kinda divided up between east, west, and high school for those, uh, Elizabeth, if you go down further, the fiscal cost to our district is the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, uh, that's our portion of it, um, the state, uh, pays about sixty percent of that, but we pay the forty percent, um, and finally, that, that box below where it talks about career ladder hours, so we have a sheet that we give out to our teachers that talks about different ways they can gather these hours, and we kinda break them down to, first one is co-curricular and extracurricular activities, fifth grade camp, uh, extra nights coming up for pumpkin nights, that's not their normal contract, um, helping out with clubs, sports, those kinda things, so that was the first one, and that was, uh, I think we got about forty-eight percent of, from there, about forty-eight percent of our hours came from that. Tutoring is kinda self-explanatory, kids would stay after school with our teachers, they would work with them, success ready, uh, we had some of our teachers working with kids on ACT prep, um, uh, how to, how to do the FAFSA, uh, resume prepping, things like that, so that counted for success ready, and we only had about two percent that way. Certification, our teachers are looking at getting, uh, nationally board certified, working on their masters in education and curriculum, um, and then committees, we, we have a lot of committees, C-SIP, salary committee, uh, study groups, anything you can think of, and so that was the breakdown you can see there, a lot of it, um, was with the pro, uh, co-curricular in clubs and sports, uh, based off of what we saw this first year, you know, we, we've had some meetings with admin, and we just had one this morning again, we're, we're looking at changing some of our goals for year two, and so we really wanna have more than fifty percent of our career ladder hours include kind of the face-to-face instruction that supports student learning, so we're really kinda focused on tutoring and success ready moving forward, and we're gonna put some criteria in there, uh, for next year to make sure that happens. Um, we're also looking to, um, develop a timeline that will help our teachers, our administrators figure out when things are due, what is eligible, um, we always have questions, we have questions throughout the year of, hey, does this count for career ladder, and so we wanna try to, uh, develop a document that we will, if everything's approved this evening, we will send out to our staff before they leave here next week, uh, really outlining that, because there is opportunities in July to start with career ladder hours, only if it's verified, uh, by their building administrators though, so that's why we wanna get this out next week before they leave for the summer. Questions on career ladder?
Cal, any questions?
Fifty-one percent minimum of base-to-base instruction.
Say, say that again, Cal, sorry.
Your year two goal number one, how are you gonna manage fifty-one percent of career ladder hours to include base-to-base instruction that supports student learning?
Yeah, so Kyle, I don't know if I can get to fifty-one percent, uh, by next year, but that is our goal to have more of it that way, like I said, in our, uh, in year one, it was kinda open and- Like I said, in our, in year one, it was kind of open as far as how many hours they could manage or gather in each of those five categories. We're going to try to put some limits on some of those categories and increase the number of tutoring and success ready.
So the, for year one, hours had to be basically associated with something with the district outside of the regular contracted time, correct?
Correct.
I, I personally really don't agree with the fifty-one percent goal for year two. If our students, I mean, sorry, if our teachers are spending the time, uh, that's their regularly contracted time to work with our students or the district in whatever way possible, and this gets extra cash in their pockets at the end of the year, I see as a benefit. I'm not, I'm personally not the biggest fan of fifty-one percent goal.
Yeah, Kyle, one of the things that we struggle with when it comes to the co-curricular or the sports is sometimes as a coach, I might make, I don't know, five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars coaching and putting in fourteen weeks, and then I could come in as quote-unquote an assistant coach or a helper, and I could make more per hour and, and give, you know, a hundred hours of career ladder hours. And so that was one of the, the struggles that we had in year one, talking to some of our staff and some of our coaches. That's just one thing that came to mind that made us want to try to narrow this down a little bit for year two.
I understand, but I think there is, I mean, what a possibility of allowing, you know, teachers to double dip in the extracurricular pay and the career ladder pay. I mean, I know we've struggled to get coaches year over year, and that could be another benefit, but that's my last comment, thank you.
Mary, you want to say something?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, have you seen the use of it? You know.
I mean, the one thing that we've struggled with at CO here is the one where we have kind of like gate workers. So at first, we, we didn't allow gate workers and some of those things, and then we always struggled to find those people. And so we, we allowed that to happen in year one, and there was one or two incidents where I don't know if we double dipped on that person, you know, that they counted as career hours and we paid them.
Yeah, it's, it's happened, and, and some situations, but.
When we talk about goal three here, that timeline, it's putting in times throughout the year, like we're getting this out to our staff before they leave. In September fifteenth, they have to have their goals, everything written down and signed off on. We're meeting with them beginning in December, then we meet with them in March, and then we have them finalize it in May. Having some of those things set and some of the paperwork, I think will help us in year two.
I think as much face-to-face instruction would be where I would want to see this, this go to. I think that's, you know, what, what we're here for at the end of the day. And I am concerned about the amount of, like, I, I love, I love the clubs, I love all the sports, I absolutely keep kids engaged and stuff, but I wonder how that gets, like, if somebody getting a coaching stipend and using that for career ladder, I don't know that I would have, okay, great.
Well, we're not double dipping that.
Okay, we're not double dipping, so that's good. Could this be pushed so that we have more folks tutoring at Boys and Girls Club? So has that been happening?
No, we haven't had that happen.
Yeah, man. Just the students.
Students, yeah.
Right, but like if we had teachers for, that need some more tutoring time, and we have Boys and Girls Club.
And those kids are there, then that's something that can work. All these kind of things come up constantly, these questions like that.
And then, I guess, okay, so then I, questions answered, thank you. Sorry.
Heidi, anything else on that?
I don't.
Where did you, where did you find the groundwork for this plan?
Uh, yeah, a little bit of the story, and I was going to get a little opportunity, and I'm going to hold off on some of my comments, so we can kind of wrap up here, but, so it came out, I can't remember if it was the House or Senate Committee, this program used to be alive and probably had, and it's totally a guess, Dave, but probably seventy percent participation rate with school districts across the state. It was more typical to see rural districts participate than it was suburban or urban districts. It went away in two thousand and five with the formula change, when the state got in money trouble. They clipped all the categoricals, this was considered a categorical. And then out of, I think it was the Senate Committee, in fact, I think it was, okay, I can almost pull the senator up, that proposed this whenever I first heard about it, but, and so then it made the budget. But to our struggle was that we started the school, of course, in August. We have a big superintendent meeting that is in end of July, early August, and Desi still didn't have the information on implementation for us. We knew career ladder was coming, but we, we had no rules to know if it was like the old O five career ladder, or if it was something completely new, so it had to go through this administrative process. So our priority was just to get it off the ground, and, and I had really, really good communications that I'll kind of jump back to, if I can have just another minute on it in a moment, with the salary committee on career ladder and how to preserve it, you know. They want to keep it at a high fidelity too, because they do like it, but they understand it's got to have bang for the buck, I guess I'm getting into it, and so I'm going, I'm just going to roll, okay? If you remember, we said, this has got to impact student learning because that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars off the salary schedule. So we're balancing that on, you know, it's got to have bang for its buck. What do, what do we, what widget do we make? Student performance, and, and balancing that with the priority of trying to get the money in teachers' pockets. And we were one of the very, very few school districts in our region that said, we're doing this all three levels immediately. And you could poll the, the districts around us, I think Troy is going to do it next year, they're looking at a little bit of our stuff to kind of, same thing, get off the ground. So it was a challenge, and it's going to take some tuning over the outset of the next two or three years. But I, I, I do support the fifty-one percent, and I think you could make an argument to get it even higher. But, and some of the things that were, will be mentioned, just aren't eligible activities, you know, so. I guess we ran a little out of place, but, but yeah, thank you.
And, and what percent does a state pay?
Sixty.
Sixty percent?
Yeah. One for sure. So I love it that we're hitting teachers' money, and you know, the only slight digression is, I was so disappointed that this money from the state didn't go to salary schedule for all schools. You know, that's where, if I was game, that's where, you know, they jump-started an old program that had moderate success, depending on what district you were in, we have to make it successful here so we can maintain it. If we, if we, if it comes, if it misses the target of what we're here for, it'll be another program that's, I won't say, you know, it's abuse, we use that in salary committee too, or we excused ourselves, we said, it's not teachers looking to abuse it, it's, we don't know the rules yet, and so we're going to have to know the rules. But I can tell you the salary committee was in tune with, put rules together, let us know what we can do, we need to, we need to, you know, maintain that so we can keep.
Mary? Questions?
I'll go on, it's my question.
Heidi?
Good, thank you.
Beth?
Yeah, I, I also like the fifty-one percent, and I agree with Erin's comment, you know, the focus on the face-to-face instruction. Was the response from staff what you expected or what you were hoping to see?
The one thing that I, I wish I would have saw more, I mean, there's a thousand out of the forty-five are tutoring, but I thought that would have been an easy one to gather, and I thought I would see more. The success ready is always tough because it's, it's pretty much the secondary kiddo, and so that's probably a little tougher, so we got to find ways to do that, but.
That's been ACT prep, and what else did you tell me, something, another one that was?
Like FASFA, resume building, you know, those kind of things. I was kind of, I mean, that, that one up top where it talked about the levels, we have a lot of our staff members that are in those first couple years, the first five or ten years of their career, and so we only had seven in level one out of our, our six, we have thirty-seven in level three that are going for the hundred hours. And, and so a lot of our veteran teachers have, have taken to career ladder and, and as Doc said, in salary committee, or just walk around the buildings, there's been a lot of people happy with us trying this, and, and so we're, we're going to ask you, I guess, a little later to go for it in year two here.
Yeah, they actually extended the deadline, give you a thirty thousand foot view from the state, one month, because there's more money appropriated to it than was used at the state this year. So like at the Moazmo conference, they were begging the school districts, please take advantage of this program, because they worried the legislator might not deem it valuable and pull it. So I talked anecdotally with a couple of teachers too, and it was, and it was good to talk to them because some didn't take advantage because they didn't understand it. And we were like, we didn't understand, you know, we were just trying to get off the ground. And so I think we will see higher utilization of it, you know, moving forward, and, yeah, and I think we'll see higher utilization across the state too with it.
Anybody else? Was this a motion item or was it just another information?
Next one will be. Yeah, thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the, the actual career ladder plan for next year, is what it is?
Yes, it's more of a formality, it's essentially the same plan as previous, Dr. Wade, I just stepped on you, sorry.
No, you're fine, everything we just talked about, where the stages, the requirements at each stage, the payout at each stage, all of those are the same in year two, is what we're proposing. And if you approve that, we will move forward with this plan for year two.
Any questions, Kyle?
No.
Anybody on the board? I, I have one question, as far as the pay, does the state determine that, do we determine that?
The state does.
The state says stage one makes.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, fair enough. That's all I had. Anybody else? Okay, I could use a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four career ladder plan, please.
I'll like that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero? Okay. Kyle, I need you to speak up and you vote, please. Health and wellness. Dr. Berger?
Do that.
Aren't you a doctor too, doctor nurse?
I always claim to not rank her because of the doctor thing, but really through the COVID trials, as you well aware I have been called to, Kelly, glad to have you here, and I face for providing that program.
So, um, this is just the, the district's health program evaluation. Obviously, our goal is to prevent a healthy and safe environment so our students can learn and achieve their, their goals while we're taking care of them and their medical needs. If you scroll down, last, last year when I presented this, I did to the district nerve summaries, I did like each school separately, which you'll still see beyond there, but I did a district total just so you can see the overview. So we've seen over almost sixteen thousand students come through our doors, sent home about nine hundred and thirty-eight, and so that puts us at about ninety-four return to the class percent. So kids that come in, they're evaluated, treated, and returned back to the classroom, that's a pretty good rate, we're pretty proud of that. There are about a hundred and seventy life-threatening health conditions, and then over three hundred.
So what's the definition of a life-threatening health condition?
So asthma, diabetes.
So like something acute is occurring?
Allergies, like that require EpiPens, that, yeah, so like something that they could.
So something acute is occurring at school?
Correct, yeah, that we would be caring for, like daily asthma.
But that wouldn't be life-threatening?
Allergies, asthma, oh yeah.
But the daily, I mean, if, if, if they're coming to the office and just doing their inhaler as a, as a treatment, is that considered life-threatening?
If they don't get it, yes.
Okay, so, because I, I saw the number being kind of high.
Yeah.
I'm going, that, that's a lot of, you know, that's a lot of pressure on you.
Yeah, so it is.
And the nursing staff are life-threatening.
Yeah, so basically, those a hundred and seventy students all have some sort of plan, so seizure plans, asthma action plans, any plan. So if they were to come to our room, we have the plan from the doctor, or we've created it and shared it with the teachers as well, so that we know what to do, what steps to do.
Is that the same as a five oh four?
No, that's separate, they're two separate things, it's kind of different, but five oh four plans are a mandated document where health plans are not really mandated, but they're very much needed, because that's how we, like, a kid that comes in with asthma, if they're at level one, where they're breathing okay, but they need their inhaler, they'll take that, and then fifteen minutes later, if that inhaler didn't work, we may need to do additional treatments, nebulizers. If they're in the red zone, we need to call nine-one-one. So like there are steps to take with them when they come in, just based on how they're presented.
And from time to time, we may develop a health plan as part of a five oh four.
Yes, they do, yeah, thank you.
You know, that, that is a modification, a recommendation, a recommendation to learning often that we would do in a five oh four would be to create a health plan for students.
A lot of times, our health plans are attached to the five oh fours too, so, yep. And then, let's see, what else? If you scroll down a little bit, and then you'll get like each, like, building has how many inhalers that we have in there, how many daily medications that we administer are specific to each building, how many visits that we each see. And you can see like, my building is crazy in comparison to some of the others. Middle school has done a phenomenal job at keeping those kids in the class. I like, I love them so much because a lot of what we see is kids just trying to get out of class, unfortunately. So that's an education. That's an education part that we try to do every year, at the beginning, all the nurses try to do at the beginning of the year, that just needs to be enforced throughout the school year, like on what should be sent to our room rather than everything, if that makes sense. Because especially in an elementary building, like, we get, I see a lot of injuries, whereas in the older schools, they don't do recess, they use force, but we just don't see a lot of those bumps and bruises in the middle and high school. But we see, that's like third highest thing in elementary is the, but our highest is actually headache and stomach ache. That's a really common thing, especially in all the buildings, obviously, so. What else? Scrolling down, um, so screenings are really imperative so that we can screen our students and make sure that the kids that can't see the board and can't hear our teachers' education lessons, so we do all screenings, and there are referrals made, and we follow up with the referrals. Not all parents give us the information back, but we try to get the information back to make sure the kids did get the glasses or go to the eye doctor, and maybe the eye doctor says, no, they don't really need glasses, because we just do a pretty informal, ten feet away chart. And then the dental program's really awesome, we saw over, in our district, over a hundred kids this year. I can't really pinpoint what exactly they had done, but the dental program does, they fill cavities, they pull teeth, they refer to other dentists or orthodontic, it's a pretty cool program. So sometimes it's hard to find space in the schools to do that, but we, we manage. And then, so there's just kind of the, what each school saw. And then, that's at our annual training, it's kind of what I was talking to you about, just education for the teachers. We do EpiPens, there's just allergy, headlights, diabetes, seizures, AED, Narcan will be a new one since we started Narcan this year. And just basic, like, first aid, how to handle first aid stuff before the nurse is, is able to get there. COVID testing, we started off the year doing it in our office, kind of slowly trickled down to, here's a test if you want it, to, all the tests have expired and we don't offer that anymore, they're pretty readily available anywhere at this point, so.
Well, with, with the end of the COVID emergency.
Right.
I'm assuming that.
It ended, and, and it actually ended this month, so.
Yeah, so I'm figuring that we're, that we'll no longer do anything COVID-related.
Correct, right, yep. And then the flu vaccine clinic, we always do that through the VNA, and that's just the immunizations that are. um, the immunizations that are students and then staff.
Are those, are those numbers down or is that a normal?
Yeah, I would say they're a little down. Um, it's really hard to get consents back from parents because they, and I mean, I think a lot of parents do just want to take their kids themselves, um, which is fair. Um, and then scrolling down a little bit, um, we couldn't get IFRB again, they had stacking issues, so we're really hoping, because that's a really awesome program for the kids to get free glasses. Um, so I'm really hoping that we can get them next year. Um, and then back to school immunizations is something new that we started. Um, I'm thinking we started this at the end of last year. I'm not sure. Um, but this year we've done over a hundred immunizations, um, for school readiness. So that's the required immunizations, um, by the state. So VNA comes in, they set up a, a clinic, anybody who's, um, been contacted, hey, you're an 11th grader and your 12th grader needs an meningococcal immunization to start school in the fall, they sign their, the consent and then they get it at school. So it's a pretty cool, um, program. It super decreases the days of missed school because we had a lot of missed school days at, uh, the beginning of the school year for immunization compliance. And then the backpack, uh, program, which I think we serve a little over 50, um, of that, uh, students. So that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safely, please. Be careful. Okay, last one is at risk, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks. I think Penn's getting informed, this.
Uh, I think she asked for questions ahead of time if people had them and said if people still had some to email her.
Oh, I will.
I might be able to add a few of the things on there.
Perhaps, maybe. She might have said that, but it really isn't. That's kind of our norms anyway, so yeah, we will try to comply.
So, I move on to the at risk of this. In looking at, you know, kind of the at risk and, uh, our academy, uh, numbers, we don't really have a standalone, uh, academy anymore. Uh, I am on where we get to, uh, should we like, keep going, scroll down. Keep going and spend data.
Five.
Four.
Five.
Yeah.
There we go.
Um, our attendance rate, um, on there for our kids that are in mo options, we don't really have the academy, is 81% for 21, 22 schools, uh, is where we were, which is down, uh, from, obviously from our normal population, but, um, you know, I, I didn't think it was terrible for the demographic of kids, um, you know, that are in mo options program right now. So then we have the chart with the graduation rates. We've been running this for a while, uh, now since 15, 16. Uh, graduation for students that are long-term suspended. Uh, in this past year, 21, 22, we had, uh, 15 of those total. That's an increase. A lot of that is due to, uh, some of the THC things that we've, we've experienced and the influx of that. On the graduated, uh, none of those folks did, I don't know that it was seniors necessarily though, but most of them are still enrolled. Uh, we did have four of those kids drop or homeschool, uh, and 11 of those still and will, and some of those folks then end up in mo options, uh, as well. So we didn't have any seniors, as you see down below there, 21, 22, no seniors received long-term suspension. Partial day academy, where we had some kids that were in an academy setting, working on launch and didn't have regular classes, that was ended. Uh, once we started the pathways last year, uh, we didn't have that. We do have a few standalone launch classes for kids that are somewhat credit deficient, but not mo options deficient, uh, but having kids have a large chunk in their day in the academy, uh, is not anything that we're offering right now. And then I put this in, uh, first time we put these numbers in, freshman failure rates, the historical on this, as it relates to the pathways and hopefully this helps keep our failure rates down and our mo options rates down. So you see a 21, 22 in the green there, uh, what we ended up with as far as the failure rates. Uh, total numbers of apps per student, that doesn't mean that every student had almost one app, you know, some kids that have, they take a, a larger share, a lot of our kids don't. Uh, and then down to 3.03. Yeah, 3.03. Uh, this year, uh, what I have here is an extrapolated number, first semester doubled, right? Yeah, that, our numbers that you see there for 22, 23 are just taking our first semester and doubling. And I, so how do you know for sure? Well, I've been looking at the progress one and progress two and it's still running, uh, pretty close to this number. So, uh, that's something that hopefully, you know, uh, helps keep those numbers down to mo options. I do know that launch, we have a little bit of uptick on the kids on launch, some of that is kids that are enrolled with us, uh, came, like especially kids 16 or older that are coming to us with very few credits, some that were kind of lost in the shuffle during COVID. They, uh, were virtual and they were in other districts, they come here and we've got a kind of plan for them, you know, in just a short amount of time. So we've had a little bit of an influx of that, so.
Uh, just to pitch, just to say something here for Mr. Brooks on that, I mean, one of the things, if you remember when we went to the pathway, we came and asked the board to scale back, so alternative added, so that we can be more preemptive in helping kids and proactive so that.
And course options.
And opening up those course options so freshmen can take them and not get behind. And, uh, early data on that shows that that's been wildly successful, so, uh, we're really excited about that.
Yeah. And so then mo options overall from 21, 22 with the 15 kids that were in it then, uh, eight graduated in the spring of 22, six with cohort, we had a couple that came back. And that's actually how we got all of our points, uh, with a couple of fifth year graduates on graduation rate, uh, for NSIP. So four homeschooled, two dropped, one moved, uh, as far as where that went. Like I said, we're 12 right now. Uh, off the top of my head, I want to say there's about five or six of those that have already got done, um, two or three that are pushing right here as we get towards the end, uh, right up against the end of the two. So those numbers we'll have in next year to report. And then you can see the changes that were on there, obviously, uh, mo options is our primary placement for at risk. Sometimes we have credit recovery for those kids and their schedules too, if it's something that a graduation requirement they need to get. Um, and also long-term, and this is Dr. Berger, you know, I had a big role in this on a lot of the long-term suspensions, uh, increased restorative approach, we're getting kids back sooner when it's something that, uh, we feel like we can give them in, you know, to their benefit, uh, getting back good seat, getting back learning again. Uh, so that helped and obviously the pathways we mentioned, uh, as well. Uh, and on those course offerings too, different math offerings, algebra fundamentals and career math at the other end, help give options for kids who struggle in math, like that did, but, uh, so, um, that's definitely helped out as well. And I think the other things on there were ones Kelly, but, questions on the at risk part of it, I guess.
Really happy to hear that we think the pathways is going to go well. I was really excited about that. So very, very happy to hear that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Brooks.
I have a general, I have one question.
Uh, Matt? Hold on. Kyle's got a question for you.
If the long-term suspension historically seems to be kicking up, or do we have any opportunities or actions we can work to potentially identify those students and, uh, explore the alternative options prior to those long-term suspension happening?
Hard to say, uh, variety of reasons that they come up.
Vaping's killing us.
Well, well.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the one.
One thing that we did put in play consciously was, uh, and vaping's, you know, a thing across the state. So I, maybe you noticed, it's been a while, but we did an education campaign that came out and, uh, you know, so we brainstormed what we could do with that. And certainly our restorative is a huge piece of that. Because what we're seeing is when these kids are vaping, they really are hooked. I mean, it's a physical thing. And Matt and I have had very conversations about that, so, uh, uh, we thought, okay, we gotta get to the parents, we gotta get to the kids, so, uh, you know, did it move the needle? I hope so, but I would think that's all it did was move the needle, you know? Uh, but I, I would say off the top of my head, Matt, would be.
Tough to say.
Restorative practices.
Yeah.
And the, and the education.
For sure. To say that ahead of time, you know, some of those kids, they're not struggling academically, right, as far as, I mean, they're capable. Kids, a lot of these in the classroom, it's just those choices are not the best.
Well, I, I think, I think what Kyle was leaning toward in this question, because he and I talked a little bit, was is there any way that you can look at it, like, before they ever hit high school, look at middle school, look at grade school, and kind of look at their behavioral, uh, history and kind of say, well, we may have to be proactive in terms of.
The one thing I would say, we previously had a transition room, uh, for kids coming from middle school to the high school, um, with those kids that we, you know, we consider at risk based on behavior, uh, grades and that. We don't have that program anymore because we did not find it successful. And I'm just being frank about that.
What, what that ended up doing, just to be honest, I mean, on the part of that, is that it clustered, it clustered a group of kids who had, um, behavioral issues together in a similar place, you know, someone trying to monitor that and it became a real difficult management issue. And then, and then, you know, those kids did not.
If they weren't making progress, if they had, you know, more launch classes or make schedule two, then right off the bat, they're behind. Uh, and then in the pathways approach and some of those things too, if we're giving them more options, this is a start here for you guys, you know, to gain credits, um, to find your place, get involved in some extracurricular, yeah, to, to put those kids in that spot or have that kind of, you know, trust on them that, hey, you're going here because of past, uh, performance, just didn't find that that was effective.
Kyle, did I ask your question correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Um, Kyle, before we get to the consent, uh, board evaluations, Matt, sorry. Do you want me to take this one?
I, I thought you were grabbing.
No, so every year, uh, we do a board evalu, a board evaluation. Chris and I talked and given, we think that he'll send it out to us in the middle of June and for the, and then you'll have it done and then we'll go ahead and, uh, go over the results in July board meeting. And by having issues with that.
So second week of June, I think's what we discussed, does that work with you, your schedule or?
I had a totally different question that I meant to ask earlier when you brought it up. Did we send out a invites, meeting invites for the board workshop, budget workshop? Did I miss that?
Um, I don't know, did we?
I think we're missing invites for all meetings.
I'm exploiting my energy here, but I did not even know we sent board.
Yeah, I thought Amy did.
So for every meeting and every workshop, we just need an invite so we can go on our hours, please.
I didn't know you had those.
Yeah. That lost me a lot.
That was on my list. My calendar. So what might, might happen is Amy sent them and when Amy left the organization, her email got deleted and then those invites probably fell off.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you could be sending those, that'd be nice.
Thank you.
Do that. Okay, but back to this. So the idea was, um, you know, Alice, I think it was Alice, Michael and Heidi, you know, came up with, you know, took a bunch of questions, bowled it, bowled the ocean down to these questions. And so the idea is we're going to answer the same questions, so hopefully we get a historical trend on it. So anyway, so we send these out, June 15-ish, have them done by July 1st-ish, and then you can, uh, then that gives the administration time to, uh, to, uh, you know, get the data together and be, be ready for us to go over it on the July board meeting.
I vaguely remember last year, maybe we couldn't read the comments?
Correct.
So if we could just make sure that it's set up accurately.
That was either on this or on Dr. Berger's evaluation.
It was evaluation.
That was, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It was one survey monkey that was not right. Okay.
Okay, so June 15th, you should get this, have it done by July 1st, and then, um, then Dr. Berger can, um, correlate the data. Any questions, comments on that? Kyle, underemployment, summer school hires. Are you related to Jaclyn Vega?
No.
Totally different family.
Okay, yeah, no.
Okay, because I saw Vega and I thought of you, I just want to make sure you weren't related to her.
Yeah, no, you didn't achieve what Dr. Berger gave me, um, I, I don't think I have a connection with her.
Okay, that's good. Um, okay, does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
I want to.
I did.
Okay, hold on. So you go first Kyle.
Um, B and then items E through J.
So B and then items E, F, G, H, I, J, correct?
Correct.
Did you say B or D?
B as in boy.
D, D as in dog.
Oh, D as in dog?
Yeah.
Oh, you still, you pulled unemployment anyway, okay. All right. Anybody want to pull anything else?
I want to pull item K.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, stands item D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second on the floor. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, all those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, who pulled item D?
I did, and it's more to just make a comment, Dr. Berger throws a significant uptick in turnover this month and.
I was also going to bring that up. Sorry Kyle.
Go ahead Kyle.
Done.
Okay, so you, you were just making a comment, there was a significant number of turnover.
Yeah, no, there's a significant amount of turnover. I, I know that, you know, we have actions turning to, to help address and improve that, but, um, it's from a board standpoint, it's definitely concerning.
Mary, you want to add anything to that?
Uh, especially some of the names on there I see, I was upset with, with that, I mean, you know, but this has been an ongoing problem. I mean, my father-in-law was on the school board 70 years ago and it was an ongoing problem then, it's just, uh, that's way, but you just hate to see, um, some good teachers leaving us. And it's, it's just always going to be a, a problem.
Okay, any more discussion on item D?
Um, I, um, I don't know if we can do this or maybe if it's in executive, um, information, I, I don't know, but is there a way to see like when folks are resigning, specifically our teachers, if they are leaving to go to another district or if they are leaving to leave the field?
I'll do an exit survey.
Okay. Yep, yep, you're right.
So I think make sure Jeremy collects that information. Are they leaving the teaching profession? Maybe add that question if it's not on there.
Okay.
I think that's still what she's asking.
I think he captures that, uh, so we'll, we'll make sure we'll bring the exit, yeah, exit surveys back around for, for us to.
Okay, anything else on D?
And I want to see the comments on those exit surveys.
Have they all been on there?
They were on there last year.
They were on there last year, but they weren't on there the year before.
Yeah, I was thinking.
And I, I want to see those.
Okay, I need a motion to approve item D, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item D, Kyle, I heard you pulled it.
Yeah, it's more E through J, um, and more of a question, Dr. Berger, if you could just take me through real quick why the district is electing to subcontract or contract out these services, um, first hiring individuals full-time with the district. I don't know if you cover it all in one statement or if you need to go line by line, but wanted to know more information behind that.
Well, I would just say probably in broad terms, uh, sometimes it's a staffing issue where we, where we're unable to find, uh, the qualified person, you know, sometimes it's that we don't need a full-time FTE, uh, and certainly if it, you know, so there's an analysis done, sometimes it's a multi-year contract that we have with somebody, uh, and it's just a, I think one of these is an example of just a yearly annual renewal, uh, but there is due diligence that goes behind it.
But, there is due diligence that goes behind it, you know, every, because obviously, and I know you guys know I look at the, the dollars, but there's conversations, and actually, I'm kind of maybe stepping on Doug just a little bit here because he kind of monitors that for us, but if there's an opportunity to even put it out there because we think we can go, go out there and get someone, we always prefer to get somebody because we feel like we have more control. Although our professional service contracts, you know, we don't have too many issues with either. So there's a cost analysis oftentimes done to it. And then, Doug, would there also, Mr. Smith, would there also be a piece where there's, where we don't know the caseload for a specific?
Yeah, we hire based on need, like a lot of those translator agreements are based on need.
Yeah.
You know, how much of that are we going to need, and can we provide a full-time employment for someone that we hire, or will we be able to use them? You know, I look back, you know, like the educational examiner one, for instance, that, that we have in there, we do have two people who are full-time employees in that role, based on Mrs. Brooks' analysis of what we need. We needed someone for about two days a week.
In addition to what we would have.
In addition to the two that we have that are full-time. That did go out, we did hire one of those this year, a new one, and she reached out to several of the people who did not get hired and asked if they would want to work on a part-time basis. None of them wanted to work on a part-time basis for us, they were seeking full-time employment. So we ended up contracting out for those additional days, because that's based on a need. You know, we look at the speech language one that's in there, that is a person who, we have people who are employed in that regard, but whenever we have them, someone out, like this year on maternity leave, we need to have that covered. And so we have an agreement with someone who comes in and covers those when, when we need to do that. So, in some ways, I believe, you know, like especially some of those that I mentioned, we're saving the districts some funds by not hiring a full-time person in that regard and contracting out. Now, that's the case of some of those that I do know. But I know, like, you know, we sit there, we think about those interpreter agreements, I mean, that's simply, we hire them based on when we need that translator or that interpreter to come in.
Anything else, Kyle?
That's it. Thank you for the overview. That's what I appreciate it.
Okay, any more questions on item E? I need a motion to approve item E, please.
So moved.
Well, we got to do them one at a time, you know, I've got pull, so, not that they have pull.
I'll second.
So.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, item F, any additional discussion? I need a motion to approve?
Moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Item G, vision impairment services agreement, any more discussion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven zero. Item H, any more discussion? I need a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, Kyle and Heidi, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Item I, star school service agreement, any more discussion? I need a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. You're saying aye, right? Okay. I don't hear you, you're quiet, it's a church house. Item J, applied services, applied behavior services agreement, any more discussion? I need a motion to approve?
Moved, seconded.
Done.
Too late, Kyle. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. And then K, I think, Erin, you pulled K?
Um, just because the action is to approve an FBI LA trip and it's for a cheer.
Oh, sorry, Miss.
Trip. So the motion, so I'll, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve an overnight cheer trip.
Good catch, Ms. Williams, you bet. We'll make a correction in the motion.
And I'll second her motion.
Okay, there's a motion in second on item K to approve an overnight cheer field, field trip as presented instead of an FBI. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven zero. Okay, next item. In accordance with the provisions of section 610-21 of the Device Statute of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet in closed session in, to discuss 610-21, uh, where's the?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I need updated statements here, because I know we have a, uh, issue with. I think if you cite scholastic D and E, you'll be, you're fine. I need the, the. Well, they have their numbers, like one, two, three, four, whatever, the 610, the subsection one. Yeah, I can go pause real quick, but if you used to cite those, there's the detail of them instead of the number, that'll cover. Okay, we're going to go in closed session, discuss records which are protected from disclosure to law, scholastic probation, expulsion of graduation, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employee's.
I'll make a motion to go into closed.
Second.
Okay, we're, we're got a motion in second. Roll call starting with Austin, Kyle, you go last. Yes?
Yes.
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 Now it's your turn.
Yeah.
Okay. Give us a, we need about a six-minute break, and then we'll go from there. So. Just kind of.